I mean, I would encourage everybody to read over it. Like you said, it's straight out of the code. So any questions you have, be happy to speak with you about it. But there's, there's certain, certain requirements. You know, like it couldn't be more than two times in a year. Has to be approved by all the other members. It needs to be communicated to the clerk beforehand of why you're not going to be there. And there's certain, certain things that you have to prove to say, hey, this is why, you know, it's not going to be just like a.
Habit.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to come, so here I am by video. It's not going to be like that. It's got to be approved.
By the council?
Right.
A simple majority vote?
Well, I don't think we're ready for a vote because it's a resolution.
No, I mean, but in the case of that. If someone were, let's say Laura was having another baby. And let me just go there. And she was in the hospital and was able to, to communicate, participate via the hospital. Let's make it as preposterous as possible. We never know. And she wanted to participate. Do, is it a unanimous decision or is it a simple majority? I just want to put prospects in your mind. Sorry, Jan. It's okay. Or you can let us know, Mike.
I think it's actually approved by the, by the clerk.
I thought there was a time aspect to it. Like it was last minute and the council had to approve it. I haven't read that in a month.
I haven't either, but.
There's two different ones. So there's a virtual meeting and then there's remote participation.
Well, maybe you can explain that at our future meeting. Okay? Are you pretty good with that? Okay. And all right. What else, Mike?
I have reached out to U H Y about the concerns I had with the contract that they'd sent. I told them my two concerns I had and they were, they said, we're willing to do that, make the changes and send it in. So is that something you are still wanting to go forward and sign that contract and go forward and do that at this point?
Consensus of council.
Forensic.
Do you want to vote on that, Mike?
Well, I've got your all's approval to make those two changes we talked about and send it on to them.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Is everybody on board? Anybody not understand? So make sure we're all good. Okay. Mike, I believe you have an understanding for the council. Thank you. What else, sir?
And I also had that easement for Cornelia Cox, but we've taken care of that.
Okay. Anything else, sir?
No.
If anybody thinks of something, you know, we've, we've got time. All right, town manager report. Heather could not be here. And so update on the R F P for professional services and generator. I'm unable to address that. Sorry.
Mayor for B right there, Glow Run. I think Chief Holt may be able to speak to some of that.
He said he would. Chief Holt, would you come forward, please, and describe to the council what, here's the printout. Would you like that?
Sure.
This is from a sponsor of Charity Hurst. You can read that. Here's the maps. Everybody should have the maps. Let me give you all this, Ron. Hold on, please. There you go. Thank you, sir.
I can read the release that was put out by Ms. Hurst and it says, join us for the Shamrock 5K as we celebrate St. Patrick's Day. Let's see who can wear the wildest costume and the most green. You can even get your glow on for this night race. The race includes a guaranteed event tee shirt for pre-registered runners and awards ceremony with special trophy mugs. Hang around after the race to celebrate St. Patrick's Day at Cold Town Taps with loudmouth karaoke beginning at 8:00 P. M. We know that you can sing. A new course design will take you through the scenic downtown Richlands, Virginia. Start, finish at Cold Town Taps. Packet pickup and race registration will open at 5:30 P. M. At Cold Town Taps. Let's rock. All proceeds and donations benefit the St. Jude's Children's Research Hospital sponsored by Charity Hurst. And you've all been provided the route. It's a different route this year. We did have a meeting with Ms. Hurst and all of our department heads with the town to include our fire and rescue, our street department. We do have a plan that we feel is going to make, you know, for a safe event for the participants and, you know, pedestrians and people who are going to be sharing the roadway on, on the race day. So we have, you know, again, we've got the, you've got the route. We're going to have a, a coned off section for the runners. So it'll be easily visible for motorists. And then at the busy intersections, we have, we have police officers that are going to be dealing with the traffic at, at the intersections, at our busiest intersections. And we have other volunteers and resources that we're going to have at some of the less busy intersections. But we felt like we have a plan that's going to provide for a safe event for everybody involved.
Thank you, Ron. Are there any questions about the Glow Run? Being no questions, I will only add, thank you so much, sir, for your explanation. I would only add that it's St. Patrick's Day and it's, has two-fold benefits. It's people getting together and running and being in a healthy cause, a healthy environment outside. And then it's for St. Jude's. There's nothing always helping there. Any thoughts? Shall we proceed? Okay. Clinch Valley Health.
One, one second. I'm sorry. The R F D, did we send out anything? Are we still, are we going to hire a professional group to maybe screen a, or provide applicants for a town manager? I thought that was going to be sent out and.
I think that's a different thing than what's on here.
I don't know, Doug. I'm going to answer that.
Would Susan know? Would you?
Um, I think they talked about that, you talked about that last month.
Okay. Wonder, has it, I mean.
I don't know the status.
I'm not aware of the status either.
And Doug, I'm sorry, I don't know either.
If I'm not mistaken, the last time I asked about it, she was almost finished with it. So she is working on it.
I mean, we need to proceed if we're going to, you know.
We may know more about that on Tuesday. But it's a valid question. We do need a manager. Okay, town manager report. I'll just take this up. Clinch Valley Health Provider Appreciation and New Provider Welcome. This was in our packets. And Clinch Valley Health is invite you to our Provider Appreciation and New Provider Welcome Reception Tuesday, March 28th, 2023, from 5:00 to 6:30 P. M. At the Appalachian Arts Center in Cedar Bluff. So if council is obviously invited and so if you're able to attend, it would be very nice. Okay, there's nothing else under the town manager report. So shall we proceed to council member reports? It's not listed. I'll just go left to right if that's okay. Laura?
Um, first off, Alan from the electric department asked me to relay this message to everyone. He said that he has done some research and that our electric rates are lower than A E P right now. Also.
I think that was.
Anybody want to applaud?
I think that was with per cost adjustment not there is when he.
I actually asked him about that and he said they are even lower with the power cost adjustment, but he thought that they were lower even without. I'm not going to get into that because he's not here.
I disagree with Alan on that. Okay.
Well.
Because I've done the research and we're still, okay.
Okay. Well, I thought it deserved an applause.
With our per cost adjustment.
Okay. Go ahead, Laura.
Also, another update will be, and I don't know, two things. I don't know how much I can really say about it yet, but just want people to know that, and I have seen things on Facebook saying that we lost a grant, a revitalization grant. That is absolutely not true. We have the revitalization grant going. It's going very well. The people, the planning people will actually be here at the end of this month. They're going to start having meetings with business owners and citizens, property owners. It is a very, very positive thing to restore parts of Richlands. It's going very smoothly. And also, finally, the Army Corps of Engineers were here in town, physically in town. I went with them. Chief Holt, Captain Kraus, Mayor Curry, Shannon Plaster was here. It's a very positive thing. And we've got that flood study going. And they are not only doing the flood study, they are providing flood remedies. And one of the things we did talk about were the trees and the debris in the river. And we really are not allowed to mess with that, but they are going to provide us with answers and solutions. And then that will lay on our shoulders to, with what to do with that information. So.
Laura, let me ask you to expand on that, please, since she's on the topic. It was a very positive meeting. The public meeting at the time and Susan, you're, I think he's going to send the information that we're going to put out in various formats so the public can respond. Would you mind to share the time and what we're doing and all this?
Oh, the, oh, the public meeting is on the 30th, I believe, isn't it? I don't have it in front of me. And that's, it's going to be here at town hall. I don't want to say the time because, do you know the time, Susan?
Six o'clock.
Six to eight. I thought, I was going to say 6:30. So thank you. So from six to eight on the 30th here at town hall, the, the people from the design group who are, the planning group who are helping with the grant are going to be here to talk to the citizens. We're talking like a million dollar grant to help, non-matching grant to help revitalize parts of downtown. And it's going to take everyone involved. The more people who get involved, the more this is going to benefit because they want to know from the citizens, the business owners, the property owners, they want to know where we want to revitalize these streets, what we want to do, what that looks like for us. And if no one shows up to these meetings, then.
It won't happen.
Yeah.
It's won't happen.
So we need a lot of participation, a lot of bodies here, a lot of involvement. And really, things are just really looking up right now. I mean, everything seems to be moving in a very positive direction.
Laura, would you expand to, please, so that council will know? Sometimes we don't get the full picture. The $50,000 grant is what's paying design and dialogue and design. And their partners, what is upstream, downstream, whatever.
Yeah.
And, excuse me, I'm sorry. Just a minute. The million dollars, we don't have that. But the only way we're going to get it is to fulfill all these prerequisites that we have to do.
And this is, this planning group is being paid for, like you said, through a grant, a $50,000 grant. We've already got it. It's already paid for. So if, if no one shows up to these meetings, then we are essentially telling them that we don't want to revitalize downtown. We don't want to make it look better. And I don't want to see that happen. So on the 30th, six to eight, this is going to be the first of a few public meetings. And we need a lot of public participation because this is our town. We're going to step up, take pride in it, fix it up.
Can we put that on backseat channel? Yeah. It's going to be advertised on our website, Facebook page. And then the Tasewah County Chamber is going to send out information. And also she contacted, excuse me, sorry, the chamber. And I've contacted Ginger Brand with CARP because she also has a massive email list and they're going to do that.
And they're also, one of advertising, it was a big thing that we talked about and access for everyone to be here. So he's also going to be here. I think the, the main planner is going to be here a couple of days prior. And he's going to be walking the streets to assess. And when he does, he's going to be handing out flyers. He's going to be going in these businesses and talking to people. I told him that if he gave me a stack of flyers, I would start going to people that I know, will start getting the word out and getting people in here because this is a huge opportunity for us.
Please, no. It's not a contentious thing. It's a positive thing.
It's a very positive thing.
So, and ultimately they will make their recommendations on what areas are being solved by the citizens. Okay?
And they really do want public involvement. And the sun is shining on us. It's feeling, feeling positive.
Well, sorry.
That is it.
Okay, thank you. Jan?
I just have one thing. I've had a lot of people ask me about, are we going to do fireworks 4th of July? So I know that these things have to be booked from having done that before. And Keith was always real good to talk to the people that did the fireworks. And I was wondering if, if you would, Keith, call for us and see what dates are available and the cost.
Man, I'm sorry. I, I mean, Keith, I'm sorry. Can you come up? I just can't hear very well.
Do you know who made the contact with them?
Last year. What, Connie, her records might reflect that. I don't know. Do you know, Susan?
I can look and see who we paid last.
There you go.
And should have a contact number or something.
Because if we're going to do that, we need to book it early.
It's a hit. People like fireworks. I'm sorry.
And we'll need to raise money for it.
And that's something the events committee can work on.
Yeah, but I knew they wouldn't be in place yet. So that's why I brought it up tonight.
If we can get that number to them, I know they, we can work together and get it taken care of.
Okay. Okay, go ahead, Jan.
That's all I have.
Okay, the fireworks. So Keith, maybe you can follow up with Susan and get that information and work toward that. Thank you. Okay, Jordan?
All right. Let me go through my list here. It's a little scattered. I attempted to organize it. But first off, Tiny Talks at the Rec Park was a huge hit. For those that don't know, the kids that are too young to play the standard leagues, basketball, soccer and volleyball, they got a chance to come out. They've had a blast so far. Basketball's wrapping up this week, but if you still want to do soccer and volleyball over the next four weeks, reach out to the Rec Park. They'd be glad to help you out. Richlands Little League, opening day is April 2nd. They came to our last rec commission meeting and they seem to have a lot of things planned this year. They have a very large tournament coming in July. They don't have a lot of details at this moment, but just be prepared. It's going to be pretty cool from what they let on. We already touched on the repairs. So I wanted to go ahead and reach out to, or say thank you to Billy Roberts with V C C for coming out to the I D A and discussion, discussing a few things. They're wanting to work with the I D A and the town itself. So I wanted to say thank you to her and hopefully we look forward to working with her. Let me see, what else do we have? Okay, so I've had a few asks from both commissions. Planning, rec, as well as the I D A have asked me about appointments. I have sent that draft over. There's a lot of conflicting priorities right now. So that'll be posted when we get to it. Mike Yates in Hidden Valley reached out to me about a drain pipe. I believe you and Laura went and saw it. He just wanted to stay on top of things, super nice about it, said he's in no super hurry, but he wants to keep it top of mind. Where are we at on that? Does anybody know?
Well, what we've done here is we approved for it to get, we're first in the pipe and the labor to do it. And we have had nobody to direct them to do it. It needs to go to the street department.
Okay.
And that would be a direction from Heather.
So we need to talk to Heather.
Billy, that's who would do that, is street department, right? You wouldn't do that one.
And also before that was going to happen, I believe you were going to draft something up, just kind of saying that once we do this, that we will never be responsible for the upkeep of that. Something. Was that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Do you recall that, Mike?
I'm trying to remember which one that is.
There was a huge transformer in Hidden Valley that water just rushes down to because the road goes down towards it. Essentially, he needed his drain increased. His culvert pipe needed to increase in size.
What happened, Mike? We didn't have no water to, to let water out of our concrete ditch. So over time, I guess we saw the piece of the concrete now and they not had it. Okay. Well, whatever happened, happened. But there was nowhere for the water to go. Now it goes in this guy's yard and he's got a transformer there. And it's filling up the side of his driveway. And the kids plays in that area. And we don't want a kid to get electrocuted. So we decided to put a pipe across the driveway and across the yard to let water.
So we need an easement for his property because I think what I heard from there is that that was placed in before that was the town of Richlands.
I think that's right.
We probably need an easement and a, a letter or statement. We're not responsible after we put the pipe in. We agreed to put the pipe in and that's all we're doing. We're not paving his driveway back. We're not doing nothing. We're putting a pipe across there. We're done.
I think this is one that happened maybe in, it's been a while.
It's been a while.
Just waiting for information.
He came to council one night, too.
Okay. Yeah, I was waiting on information.
What information do you particularly need? Anything from his son?
Well, I mean, I'll need to know where the property is. I mean, yeah, and a description of Hidden Valley is fine.
Well, we can get exact details. Yeah.
For me, I probably need like a deed of where, where this is located so I can, I can get on that.
How about address, whatever?
You just need to provide an address?
Yeah, I could probably find it out.
I would think maybe Michael could provide information that's pertinent, such as, if you need his deed.
Well, I can, I can get that if I know.
Okay. Need his map number? Yes, absolutely.
I have his number if I can share with you.
I mean, I can give you his address before we leave here. That's not a problem.
If he's the property owner, that.
A hundred percent. Yeah, okay. Okay. So awesome. I will let him know about that. I'm sure he'll be super excited. I won't bore you with all the tech details, but I am looking into that. I haven't had enough time to unravel everything in terms of like our disaster recovery plan at the town and all that fun I T stuff. Could just be me being paranoid. But I should be able to speak to that. And also digitizing some of our documents over the course of the summer, I should be able to speak to that. Probably April is what I'll commit to. So I will knock that off. And then in term, the I D A asked if we would ask about the battery backup, the status of that. And I told them I would gladly ask at council. The batteries that we ordered to help with peak shaving. Does anybody have any?
I can't get, I know that we talked about battery backups. We've talked about it with Blue Ridge, Alice Wolf and various people. We chose to do it, I believe.
I think there was a miscommunication between Blue Ridge or AMP with the company that they had an agreement with. They thought they had an agreement and there was not actually, or they made a quote of a price and that was not actually what the price was going to be. That's if I remember correctly.
That sounds right, but I just wanted to clarify and I will relay that to them.
As far as, there's not been any progress on that.
Okay.
And that's.
Does he have a particular interest in that?
They just were asking.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm just curious. Okay.
All right. And then one other thing I was going to ask everybody. I have been speaking with a few other people and doing my own research. I was going to see if low priority, of course, if the attorney could spend some time and look at the A D A compliance aspect of our streams. I have a sense that we might be, I don't know, maybe it's fine. I don't know. But I would ask that we maybe look at that.
The Americans Disability Act is what he's talking about. And I may be wrong.
No, no.
But I think that when we live stream things or put it, we were supposed to have a someone to sign to meet the federal law. You might want to check on that.
Yes. And then I won't speak much of this, but our first electrical committee meeting went well. It was success. We talked through a lot of things. It was fun, to say the least, but we did make good progress. And I'll let, if Doug, I won't steal Doug's thunder. I'll let him talk on it more. But that is all from me.
Thank you, Jordan. Rick?
Okay. We've got some trees that's hanging over the dugouts and the press box over at Crittiville. Could we get the electrical company to take them down before they fall? Because they're dead. They're big chunks falling out here in the press box.
At Crittiville?
Yeah, if we can get them down because we really don't have the money to rebuild the press box or dugouts. And needless to say, I don't want no child in that with the trees hanging over.
Absolutely.
So this is really a hazard.
Would this come, I don't know, would this come under rec budget?
That was the next thing we were going to look at.
Well, I mean, we're, this is the problem. We're in baseball time. We've got little kids sitting in these dugouts with these two huge trees. And you go over there and a big Liam's laying into, you know, on top of it now, the coaches or somebody throws them off. But what happens when that goes through that and we've got kids sitting in it? That is a problem. We need to take care of this. I'd say it comes the electrical department's problem. I mean, they've got the bucket truck to cut them down. I'd say we'll get them cut down. I support that.
Okay, that's reasonable. Can we ask, that that be priority number 2.6? I'm not, I'm joking, but we have so much to do and I'm not minimizing that at all. I just don't know how to prioritize it. Do you understand what I'm saying, council?
Well, I just, it's, it's life threatening with kids.
Absolutely.
And I don't want this to happen.
It's also not the first time it's been brought up. So I'm, I'm with you. They've been asking for this for six months.
It's time it gets done.
I agree.
And I'm just saying that we instructed town manager to tell the electrical people to go over and cut trees down.
Would that be electrical or the street?
Well, they have the bucket truck. So it's going to have to be later on. Street doesn't have bucket truck. Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Billy, for being here today.
Susan, can you relay that, please? Thank you, Rick. What else, Rick?
Okay, we got some C prop grants. It's still out. We need to get the C prop grants closed so we're eligible for more. With the thing that Doug was talking about is hiring a company to find us a town manager. If we had the C prop grants closed that we had, they would pay for us to get, for that service to happen. We wouldn't be spending our money out of our budget to do this. So C prop grants, I think, are tied up over the stage.
You're right. It, so you, you three, not you, Gary, Doug, Rick, Mayor Curry would know. You guys were here when they voted on, it's not funny, but it was some sort of train that was going to go by the love sign.
I can tell a little bit about.
Well, that train, Chief Holt has the train. I don't know why Chief Holt has the train, but that train needs to be assembled.
I think it's storage.
Is that the C prop grant we got?
That is the la, yes, the, the grant paid for phase two, which included the train.
Kamala Plata.
Yes.
Yes.
And I remember you guys voting on a train, but I didn't know. I just heard, I just kept hearing the train, the train, the train. And then Chief Holt's like, why do we have a train at the police department?
Yes. Yes.
I think maybe the train, if we can't put it by the love sign, I mean, maybe, I don't know what it is, but the section house might be a good.
It's not a good place.
Well, it's all about trains, Ron.
Well, actually, we, I will give credit to the section house. We have got so many railway things going on now. We started it. Okay, that's the truth.
What is the train? Is it a?
I haven't seen it. I didn't order it. I don't know. All I know is something fun for kids.
Is it, I mean, it, it.
Have you seen it?
I have.
Have you been down there to see it?
I've, I can, you can see it in a pile. And I'm like, what is in this pile? So I pick up the little book and it's like locomotive, locomotive. And I'm like, wait a minute. So then it all starts coming back to me. It doesn't look like something a child could play on.
I want to be really clear. The reason it doesn't belong at the section house, it is not an historic thing. We're trying. Nothing is perfect. We're trying to, oh, I know. But I have people say these things. There were all kinds of things that go there. We're trying to abide by the grant and keep it as appropriate as possible to be very serious. But I knew you were teasing. But as far as the train, I think it was Connie's suggestion to get it and we did it. And it's, there are other things that are undone. I'll, will allow you to keep going on because I don't know anymore about the train. I'm assuming it's at the, there because it was a storage area. I'm assuming it's at the, there because it was a storage area. Is that about what you think?
Unfortunately, it's, it's in one of the boat bays and we're, we're probably gonna, but that's gonna be eaten.
Where, Ron?
So, so right now it is stored, but it's in store, it's stored in one of the bay areas at the police department where we store our boats. Um, so we're trying to make that area more accessible for our emergency vehicles, so we're, we're gonna work to clean that out. And we'll probably need to find a, uh, somewhere to relocate it here in the near future.
I would suggest if we can possibly uh, put it together and put it where they intended to go, at the um, green, green space or whatever it's called. That's what was the intention. It'd be a simple thing, put it there.
Yeah, so we have some time. It, it's not something that's necessarily pressing that we gotta do in the, in the immediate future. But uh, we're definitely trying to clean that area up and make it more accessible for our emergency vehicles, especially um, where we're approaching spring. Where it's, you know, our flood season, we need to be able to access those vehicles.
Yes. Thank you, Ron.
It's pretty, it's hindering us to get other grants from C props, so we really need to get that thing out and get it.
But that's something, I can, Mayor, if that's okay, I, I can talk with Heather about it um, this week. And, and let her know that that's my intention is to try to clean that area up and we can see what, you know, she'd like to do in terms of moving that along.
Think, I, I may be wrong. I believe those grants came from Cumberland Plateau. And we, uh, we have a contact now because uh, it is Debbie Milton. So she might be able to assist you, Rick, in how to proceed with future grants.
Well, all we gotta do is close this out and send in a picture. And I think there are actually a little bit of money left on it that we draw down. Then we should send them a picture, yeah? And send them a picture that it's in place and we get. We're closed out, ready to apply for other grants.
Those are very important things. And when I get to my report, I, I wasn't planning to, but I'll elaborate on how important that is.
It doesn't seem that, I mean, you could probably stick it in the back of your car and go, I'll go help you put it up.
We have to assemble a plane equipment. We can go throw that up.
It doesn't seem like excessive, you know, and Ron, Chief Holt would love to get it out of that area.
I haven't seen it, but I've seen it. Alright, we'll check on that. What else, Rick? So we can close it out.
Yeah, I just want the br, the grants that we've got like that, so we're eligible in the future for other grants. And I don't think I have nothing else at this time. Potholes. But if we can do paving, we can eliminate a lot of them. But we do have a lot of potholes that needs to be, that there's pretty many.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Gary?
I just have a, I think, a couple of things right now. I had a couple of citizens ask me about these vendors that set up in town. You know, um, um, like the hamburgers or fruit stands, whatever. Are they required all to have a merchant license in town?
Defer to Laura for that.
Thank you, Mayor Curry.
She has an experience, but she could just relate the facts.
I'll stick to the facts, just the facts, ma'am. Um, they are required. Now, the, there is a fruit vendor who comes. I don't know if they have one. It's not, I mean, I don't check, but the food trucks are required to have a permit. Pay their taxes, be checked out by the health department. They have to have written permission. I, I, I mean, in all honesty, it's kind of a lot of hoops to jump through for a food truck to come. And some of them are kinda like, what the heck? You guys making it so difficult? But that you gotta have written permission from the property owner, the, the, from town hall. You gotta have the permit from town hall, from the town manager. You gotta pay the taxes, the permit from the health department. And I don't know, I mean, we can't go around and ask. I would think that might be, I don't even know if that's the police department that would go and ask those things, but.
Who enforces that?
It's supposed to be the police department.
And have they got a list of who does and who don't?
The town manager should have a list. It should be pretty easy to name.
Yeah, I'm not sure, but I can, I can definitely get with the, with the attorney and check and see if there is some um, ordinance that we have authority. You know, so, and we, and we've had a lot of questions lately regarding, you know, zoning and different things and, and, you know, we don't have any authority to enforce zoning issues. And I'm not sure on that one, sir, but I can check. And I can get with you, you know, on it, you know, reasonably soon, the next day or so, if, if, if you give me an opportunity, we'll get with the attorney.
The last time I was on the town council, I was the one that probably created most of this, cause we had food truck problems. So the, really, the only thing you allow to check is if they come and got your permit from the town to set it. That's the only thing that you can enforce, I believe, is way.
On the merchant license side. And, and we can, we can surely do that. And, and we've actually, we've actually had a, you know, an issue here in, in the last few months where there was folks going door to door, uh, and it was, and they were selling vacuum cleaners and the, and, well, and the, and the, the tactics were pretty strong handed. And we had some complaints and we made a charge because they didn't have a merchant license. So I, I feel pretty certain that we could probably charge that if they didn't have a merchant's li, license. But again, I'll check with the attorney and, and I'll get some clarity on that and come back to you, you know, reasonably soon on that, if that's okay.
They, I don't think they need to have a merchant's license according to the uh, food truck ordinance. They've gotta have, I think they called it a food truck permit.
For the food trucks, I think the strawberry stands, I don't know if that would fall under a similar.
That's a different ball of wax.
Farmer's thing.
I don't know what that would fall under.
Yeah.
I, I have had questions about strawberry people too of why, or that, do they have to pay and the food truck does? And I'm like, I have no idea. They are not. They are random parking lots throughout town. A lot, yeah.
But it, we always looked at that. The last time we was talking about the food trucks and stuff, the strawberries and stuff was farm fresh stuff. So we left it under the farmer's market. We didn't even touch that.
Gary?
Just hold, hold up there. I got one more.
Yes, sir.
I got some citizens in Lake Park complaining about parking up at the end, at the restrooms.
Okay.
At the lake out there.
Okay.
And at late at night, and I've, I've actually seen them myself. And I mean, I didn't go up to see what they're doing, but.
Right.
They actually suggested maybe putting a gate, another gate down at the end. And they was even furnishing the material, but you know, that's something we'd have to look at. But if you can keep an eye on that up there for them.
Yes, sir.
Parking up there in behind that bathhouse or bathrooms, what's up there?
Okay, I'm, I'm putting that in as an extra patrol request right now.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Gary, thank you. Doug?
Okay, um, I'd like to, a little bit more than what Alan said, we are close. But I agree with that, but we wouldn't even be close if it wasn't for this council. I think we voted down two electrical increases and that's kept us within the ballpark with AEP. So I'd like to, not myself, but pat the council on the back for stopping those increases and voting them down, okay? The other thing is, um, the meeting, I thought we made a lot of progress. And I think if we, I would like to suggest, if it's alright with the committee and council, that we try to have a meeting each month, maybe an hour before the council meeting, like at five or, you know, something like that. And we watch the electric system close with our committee and suggestions, so we can bring it to council and keep, you know, keep, keep a watch on the.
Doug, you're wanting to have a medical committee meeting an hour before council?
Yeah.
I think, that you facilitate that?
Yeah, before, yeah, before council. Yeah. Okay, that's, that's, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else before I go on to my report? Anybody else? Laura? Okay, Rick? Laura, let's go with Lauren, Rick.
You are gonna have your committee here for the March twenty first at five thirty meeting.
Yes.
Well, we've got a zoom call at five thirty.
Laura?
I just wanted um, to thank you guys. I, I love sitting on this council and I think it's a lot of fun. And uh, I think that although some of us disagree sometimes more than others, that we are all getting along very well. And everyone is very receptive to compromise and, and um, working together. And we all have a common goal. We might not always agree the road to take, but we have a common goal. And I feel like we're working really well together to, to get there. We're making progress and I'm excited.
Thank you, Laura. Any other comments before I wrap this up, hopefully? Okay. Mayor's comments. The first thing I would like to do, I wanna recognize Laura. Um, our very own Laura Mallow has been, received some prestigious awards. So I, I texted her this afternoon and I said, Laura, please tell me exactly, so I don't get it wrong. And this really is a big deal. And she, I was reading exactly. This is from Laura. I was recently accepted into, am a current member of the UVA Sorensen Institute for Political Leadership. And have been awarded the two thousand and twenty-three Lawrence E. Richardson Citizenship Award for Open Government. And will accept my award Thursday, uh, which is the sixteenth after tomorrow, I believe, uh, which is for your day, the birthday of James Madison. I read about it. Uh, they chose his birthday. As she says, he is the person who was an advocate for openness in government. So I'll just add my little two cents as a person who does love history. The Constitution of the United States, with all its flaws, and had major ones with the three-fifths compromise, was a compromise. Those people, including Madison and Jefferson, and all these people, had to compromise in order to get the Constitution. And we are working together as a group to do that. Uh, so Laura, congratulations on your award.
Thank you.
We're very proud of you and what you have done. Okay, and if you ever been to Montpelier, you need to go. It's his home. Okay, next. Um, I would ask that in the future, uh, we remove the consent agenda and divide it up the way we used to do it, which is a separate uh, item for checks and a separate item for uh, hold on, minutes, please. Uh, instead of consent agenda, I know that's done at the county level, but it seems that we have a, a feeling here because we wanna talk about checks. And it makes it more difficult. We're trying to go to uh, to uh, the minutes. And the consent, I didn't really understand it until John came and it's no reflection on him. We all have different styles. But uh, to lump it together for a vote, but I would suggest and like to ask uh, Susan for our next agenda to put those separately, please. The next thing is uh, uh, that council members, before we were just casually talking, ask why we have uh, under council member reports, non-voting items. So uh, if council is amenable to this, I would ask that we remove the words, non-voting items from our report. Go ahead, Mike.
Just throw out my two cents.
Please.
Um, it seems like every council meeting, we go through and we have, I don't know how many additions. If there's any way, cause we really should advertise what we're gonna talk about. If there's any way you could get up with the manager or the clerk, the one who makes this agenda and let them know, hey, I wanna talk about this, this, this. I understand it's not always possible to get every single thing on there. I get it. But I would recommend that try to get up with the manager or the clerk beforehand. And that way you could have the council members' reports and it would be, you know, a status update as far as the, the rec commission or the planning commission or, you know, whatever you wanted to talk about. And then it would be kind of, you've gone through the agenda and here, we're just making our comments. That, that would be my two cents.
Well, my only hearing, I heard it a little bit. I don't know which direction. It doesn't matter. Someone said, why do we have it non-voting? So I will ask council for their input. Laura, left to right?
I would say remove non-voting. I would think to try to always do what you're saying. But I do not like to limit ourselves because if something comes up during the meeting or whatever and we get to that point, I don't wanna limit ourselves. So I, I would say keep it non-voting. I mean, remove non-voting, make it voting.
Dan, your thoughts? I believe you asked.
I feel the same way, cause sometimes you don't think of something until you get to your report and you may need to vote on it.
Okay. Jordan?
Um, I'm rather indifferent about it, but I can lean left. I would, I wouldn't mind at all to remove it and it be voting.
Okay. Rick?
I'm for removing it because till I come back this time to council, it's the first time I've seen it on there.
It started later, but, yeah, okay. I'm just getting a consensus here. And I follow exactly what you're saying and I'll try to expand on that. Gary, your thoughts?
I'd prefer that.
Okay, Doug?
Yeah, I'm with you guys. I think it should be taken away.
Okay, so that's the consensus of the council. I, I'll try to, you know, add to what Mike is saying. Sometimes when things are great big surprises, it's very difficult to deal with. So if you have an idea of what you're gonna talk about, maybe that could be put forth prior to the meeting to be on the agenda. If you're gonna talk about potholes, say, is that what you mean?
Well, if you're anticipating, especially if you're anticipating on a vote coming out.
A motion.
Um, yeah, then I think that would be, I mean, I don't, I don't have any problem with you all taking out non-voting items. And that's just what it's titled.
It's not a courtesy, but it, I mean, it's not a requirement. It's certainly be a courtesy.
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
Does that make sense to guys? Okay, so we're requesting that. Thank you. Uh, let's see here. Okay, I wanna uh, say one more time, we wish Heather uh, a very speedy recovery. No one ask to get sick. Frank Dorton, I didn't know it till today. Frank, I hope you don't mind my talking about you. Frank was in the hospital and got, was discharged today and said he would be here. And thank you. And as I look out here, I see town employees. I see, of course, Susan is their interim clerk. I see Ron, I see Keith, Bill and Bill's daughter. The last ones standing are our employees. Thank you. It is important that we recognize you. Not everybody can be here all the time, but we do appreciate your attendance. And for those who cannot attend, it is not a blemish on their record. Please let me make that absolutely clear. The next thing, um, uh, you talked about closing out grants. I do want to say that, for example, the transportation enhancement grant that the section house got is a big plus check mark for the town of Richlands in the state. Because it was the last checklist on the first revitalization that we got. And it completed it. And I just wanna add that it is important to do these things. So I just wanted to add that. It isn't a feather in my cap at all. It's a feather in the town of Richlands cap. Please know this. Thank you. And uh, the last thing I can think of is it's Saint Patrick's Day on Friday. So for all those with Irish blood like me, I'm very Irish, you can tell by looking, um, Happy Green Day. Thank you. Is there a motion at this point to recess until our meeting on the twenty-first?
Mayor, just real quickly, before we get into that, as far as a recess, um, I, I don't know what the intention is with that. I mean, obviously, our agenda for here today is over with. So if we recess it, there's nothing else to do.
We can, okay.
Um, so, I mean, I, I, I can't remember what the, what was that?
It was something, uh, well, we have one, the clerk, uh, possibility. And that might be executive session again. Your thoughts?
I think we can, we can include that on the agenda for next week and just advertise that agenda that, hey, we're gonna talk about personnel.
Okay. And what's the, uh, there was something else. Doug, was it something you said?
It was something about a vote, but.
Uh, connection?
Was it the, no, cause.
We didn't do that. No, that's dismissed, thrown out.
I, I felt like it was something about a vote, but I don't remember what it was.
Well, let me ask you this.
It wa, was it about the uh, um, virtual meeting?
Oh.
Yeah, that's it.
Is that what it was?
Yeah.
If we just add that on the agenda, I think that.
So, so are you suggesting that we adjourn tonight instead of recess? What is your thought?
Yeah, because that wasn't on the agenda.
Okay.
Um, just, you all should've had that in your packet of last month. If you still have it, that'd be great.
I have it. So are you suggesting that it is in our best interest to adjourn this meeting? And we will have a publicly announced meeting on the twenty-first. Are we in time for that?
We are.
Okay.
We are. It needs to be advertised. I mean, we're stating here that it's gonna happen, but we need to advertise it as well.
In the newspaper and whatever, or whatever the proper.
To post it and post it on the door out here.
Susan?
With.
Is that something you can help us with? Thank you. Does council understand what he's saying? Okay. So.